We are on the record in the matter of Keith Kaplan versus the TNEC Board of Education. Sebastian Rodriguez, Victoria Fisher, Edward Ha, Nadia Hussein, Dennis Klein, Cassandra Reyes, Jonathan Rodriguez, Denise Sanders, and Clara Williams. That is docket Bergen L. 12124. Counsel, your appearances, please. I'm sorry. Gentlemen, were you able to hear me?
Not focused this moment.
Well, I was brilliant. You should have heard what I said already. I merely called the caption into the record, which I will do again. This is the matter of Keith Kaplan versus TNEC Board of Education et al., docket Bergen L. 12124. Will petitioner please put his appearance on the record?
Keith Kaplan, plaintiff, pro se.
Good morning, Mr. Kaplan. And counsel for the respondents or the defendants, please.
Good morning. Stephen Edelstein, your defense.
Good morning. All right. We are here today for my decision on the application before me. I have had the opportunity, of course, to review all of the written submissions as well as had the benefit of hearing oral argument just last week on the instant matter. I'll begin simply by stating that the court is in receipt, of course, of the January 8, 2024 order to show cause which contained a verified complaint, an attachment which contained Exhibits A through J, and a memorandum in support of petitioner's application. I am also in receipt of defendant's answer filed on 2/1/2024, a motion to dismiss filed 2/5 of 2024, the plaintiff, Mr. Kaplan's reply and brief in opposition to the motion to dismiss filed on March 1 of 2024, again with a declaration containing Exhibits A through E. On March 14 of 2024, there was a supplemental declaration filed with additional exhibits, which was filed without leave of court, and I have not considered it. After we initially heard oral argument on the original return date, the matter was adjourned for Mr. Edelstein to secure a transcript of Mr. Kaplan's arguments as they went further afield, some might say, than what was presented in his papers. And after having reviewed that, Mr. Edelstein chose not to file a written response, however, addressed those matters by way of oral argument, to which Mr. Kaplan had an opportunity to reply just last week. So the matter that is before me for determination today involves allegations by Mr. Kaplan, a resident of TNEC New Jersey, which include a series of violations of the Open Public Meetings Act found at NJSA Section 10:4-6 and through 21. The facts and the arguments here, the facts allege, or the plaintiff alleges, and frankly, defendant conceives in part that there have been failings by the TNEC Board of Education, the defendant here, in terms of properly noticing their meetings as required by the Open Public Records Act. There is a discussion of attempts to comply, partial compliance, or frankly, there's even been mention of what is done in practice or what is not done in practice in meetings such as the ones that issue before the court. I am compelled to begin by looking at the Supreme Court decision in Palillo versus Dean, 74 NJ 562, in which the Supreme Court of the state of New Jersey rejects the idea that substantial compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act is sufficient, and rather holds that a strict adherence to the letter of the law is required. And it's through that lens that I'm going to go through the counts of the complaint. And I think the most economic way to address this is to go count by count, because each of them are so fact-sensitive as to whether or not they comply with the different provisions of the act, that I'm going to choose to address it in that way. Count one charges that the defendant board had failed to file adequate notice of annual meetings dating back to 2020 through the present by not sending notice to two newspapers. The allegation that's alleged in count one is barred by the statute of limitations. Simply stated, Title 10, 4 hyphen 15A requires that any action in lieu of prerogative writ to be filed within 45 days of the date of the action sought to be voided. So in this instance, anything that is prior to the November 24, 2023, the date of November 24, 2023, would be barred by the statute of limitations. So accordingly, count one is, or any relief under count one is denied. Count two was addressing a closed session meeting on November 15, or a closed session that took place during a meeting on November 15 of 2023. Defendant argues that that, too, is time barred by the statute of limitations. Petitioner argues that it was not, in that it was only upon receipt of a communication from the board that Mr. Kaplan was made aware that some action had been taken during executive session. He filed an Oprah request, and when he received the response to the request under the Open Public Records Act on December 18, he became aware of what he believed and couches as a vote that took place in closed session, a vote of the board in violation of the Open Public Records Act. I decline to deny relief or dismiss the count as being not in adherence with the statute of limitations. In this instance, there is no way one could have been on notice of what transpired during closed session until the requested relief was provided under the Open Public Records request, and accordingly, I do not find that the filing violates the statute of limitations. I'll note, too, that in this count, there is not a specific allegation that there was a, there was insufficient notice, or, you know, public notice of the meeting itself. That is not part of this particular count. In this count, Mr. Kaplan alleges that a vote took place in private session and was violated of the Open Public Records Act, as it was not then either adopted or voted in public session. Exhibit C to the verified complaint shows a public vote to enter into executive session that occurred during the November 15, 2023 meeting. It is then, on the other side of that, of course, there is a public vote to come out of executive session and back into the public session, also noted in the minutes. Exhibit D are the minutes of what occurred in that closed session, and it indicates that there was a consent to send a letter to Mr. Kaplan about his violating, or what was perceived as a lack of decorum during the meetings. I do not find that this arises to the level of a vote by the board as a public body. It's really rather a consensus that was reached that sending a letter to Mr. Kaplan might be beneficial to all involved. I'll note, too, that there was not a fundamental function of the public body being exercised at that point. This was an issue as to decorum or demeanor, which I have no details on. I'm not weighing in on that. I'm just simply saying that the board's decision to send a letter was not a vote that required to be made in public session. Accordingly, I do not find that there is any relief to be granted under count two of the instant complaint. Under count three, there is an allegation by Mr. Kaplan that there was inadequate notice of a special public meeting scheduled for December 21, as it was only published in one Now, the request, that's, excuse me, the request for relief here is, among other things, which I'll address separately, avoiding of what transpired during that meeting. Specifically, there was a transfer of two members of the school personnel that plaintiff asks to void. Now, defendant argues that any action taken at the December 21, 2023 meeting, which they concede was not properly noticed, was cured by a January 17 meeting where a vote was taken by the board, to ratify all that had occurred at the December 21, 2023 meeting. The January 17, 2024 meeting was noticed by way of two newspapers. However, an agenda was not published. There was some discussion during argument as to whether or not that was required, and the requirement exists unless, of course, the annual meeting schedule was posted pursuant to the rules and regulations under the Open Public Meetings Act. Now, in this instance, although the January 17 meeting was posted in two newspapers, there was no agenda made public, and it was not, that was not, this meeting is not exempt from that requirement because there had not been any schedule of the annual meetings published at that point in time. In fact, it was only published the day after the January 17 meeting. So I do find that the defendants violated the notice requirement of the Open Public Meetings Act for the December 21, 2023 meeting. It was not cured by the January 17 meeting because, again, there were omissions in what, in the notice making it invalid. The corrective action that was taken, or attempted to be taken by the board, failed here. Now, counsel for defendants also state that this count must be dismissed as two indispensable parties were not noticed or joined into the action. Those, of course, would be the two principals, Principal Valdez and Lojus, who were transferred during, as a result of a vote at this meeting. I reject defendant's argument that this count cannot be heard because indispensable parties have not been joined. And the reason being is this: I agree that the action taken by the board affected an interest of those two individuals. But the subject matter before the court has to do with enforcement of the Open Public Meetings Act. And while, were the court to void that, the vote that was made that night and the decision that was made to transfer, it would surely have effect on these individuals. But the substance of this action does not involve the interests of those individuals. Rather, the substance of this action involves compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. The very nature of an open public meeting, for example, a school board, when they make decisions, affect parents and children in their school district. It would be virtually impossible for me to conjure an example of action taken by a school board during a meeting that would not affect the interests of others, that Excuse me one second. So looking at the language from Dumont Labs versus Markwellus Manufacturing, 30 NJ 290. "Whether a party is indispensable depends upon the circumstances of the particular case. As a general proposition, it seems accurate to say that a party is not truly indispensable unless he has an interest inevitably involved in the subject matter before the court, and a judgment cannot be justly made between the litigants without either a judging or necessarily affecting the absentee's interest." I would imagine in every decision that's made by a school board, there are parties, whether parents or children, who have an interest involved in the subject matter, and the outcome of which would necessarily affect their interest. This is a, this proceeding is a proceeding regarding the board's compliance or noncompliance with the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act. Any decision made by the board is going to affect someone else's interest, which would necessarily mean that in every action filed under the OMA, that any person affected would have to be joined as a party, and that simply cannot stand for reason. So I reject the argument that this cannot be heard by failure to join indispensable Under this count, plaintiff requests, the, I'm going to go a little out of order from what's in the complaint, a declaration that defendants were in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. That is granted. There is a request to void all actions taken with regard to the transfer of Principal Valdez and Principal Lojus. One of the things I cited, or referred to Palillo earlier, one of the things that is most instructive in that matter is, well, there's a couple of things. One of which is that the court says that even where counts may not, may have been dismissed, there is, the court has the ability to look at them, even if they're outside the statute of limitations and the relief isn't granted, to determine whether there is a pattern of noncompliance and take that into account in fashioning a remedy. Similarly, however, the court also says that where the, although the substantial compliance argument failed as a defense, the substantial compliance, along with a lack of malintent, may be taken into consideration in fashioning a remedy. Now, I, Mr. Kaplan argued that he assigns to defendants a motive in having that vote to the December 21 meeting to move those principals as because their concern was that after the reorganization, they would not have sufficient votes to move that through. I don't have any reason to accept that and/or assign malintent to the board members for that vote. That's supported, too, by the fact that even though the January 17 vote failed to remedy the failings of the December 21 vote because of its own failings of notice, the December 21 vote was ratified at that meeting with the three new members not taking part, they took part in the vote, but they abstained from voting. So I do, I don't find that there's any bad intent on the part of the TNEC Board of Education specifically. However, one cannot ignore that there has been a series or longstanding consistent failing under the Open Public Meetings Act to notice these meetings properly. Having said that, I do think that remedy is necessary. And following the example of Palillo, I am prepared to order as relief that the board must rectify the vote that was taken on December 21, or I should say, the results of that vote need to be ratified. It needs to be reinstated, revoted within 70 days, or by up, those actions are going to be voided if it's not done within that timeframe. Now, I have a few other things to say about this. The reasons I'm not voiding it outright, although I'm confident that whatever I avoided could be cured, is because in this instance, I do, I did hear from Mr. Edelstein that his clients have been trying to comply. They have not complied, but there have been efforts to comply, where when used to be, the notices used to be noticed in one newspaper, they're now being noticed in two newspapers. I am confident that the message is clear, that there does not appear to be an exception for this calendar year to filing an agenda in addition to notices of the meetings. In addition, I cannot ignore the fact that the actions, the specific action, and I'm not necessarily saying that this, that specific action regarding the principals will be voided, I'm saying all action taken at that meeting will be voided. But I know that the request was specific to those two individuals. But one of the factors that leads me to this remedy is that those two individuals have been acting in their current, or the capacity that they were, the transfers that were made at the December 21 meeting have put them into different employment situations. I understand they're always, they're still board employees. I'm not talking about who their employer is. I'm talking about what their job responsibilities are, and they have been presumably carrying those out for at least the last seven months. So to simply void that without allowing the board an opportunity to cure, I simply don't think is in the best interest of the citizenry of TNEC, or surely not those who are participating or are currently making good use of the public school system. The fourth count in the complaint talks about a January 3, 2024 meeting, which was the 2024 reorganization meeting. And interestingly, it appears that the board, at the outset of that meeting, acknowledged that it had not been properly noticed and decided to continue anyway. Now, again, there was an effort made to cure this deficiency, again, by having either the votes, whatever votes were taken. There's, I have no information in the paper submitted about what votes may have taken place that time, not, there's not one that's particularly referenced in terms of trying to avoid it. But there was an effort to cure in, by the January 17, 2024 meeting, and having the matter, all of those, whatever votes were taken, ratified or revoted. As previously noted, however, since the January 17, 2024 meeting was also not properly noticed, it cannot stand to cure the deficiencies of the January 3, 2024 meeting. So again, I find that what transpired in the January 3, 2024 meeting violated the terms and conditions of the Open Public Meetings Act. It was, as I said, not cured by January 17. In addition to that declaration of judgment, this same remedy is going to apply, and that is, any action that was a formal action that was taken by the board is going to be voided, if not cured, in some fashion, within that same 90 days. I said 70 days, the first one? 70 days. The fifth count of the complaint seeks relief, not under the Open Public Meetings Act, but rather under the New Jersey Civil Rights Act, specifically NJSA 10:6.2. And plaintiff requests that the court make a number of findings, the first of which is declaring that the Open Public Meetings Act violations may be addressed with, through, or by an application of the New Jersey Civil Rights Act, determining that the defendant's violations of the Open Public Meetings Act deprive plaintiff and others of a right protected by statute, voiding all actions and enjoining further violations. Now, in terms of the applicability of this particular section to the case in front of me, finding that the Open Public Meetings Act violations may be addressed through the Civil Rights Act would require the court to find that any substantive right, privilege, or immunity secured by the Constitution or laws of this state, or whose exercise or enjoyment of those substantive rights, privileges, or immunities has been interfered with or attempted to be interfered with by threats, intimidation, or coercion by person under acting color of, excuse me, acting under color of law, may bring a civil action, et cetera, et cetera. First of all, there's no allegation here that any rights have been interfered with, by threats, intimidation, or coercion by people under, acting under color of law. So it really has to do with whether any substantive right, privilege, or immunity secured by the Constitution of laws, or laws of the state of New Jersey, has been deprived. I will say that plaintiff fails to make any argument or provide any support for the fact that a violation of the Open Public that a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act equals such substantive right, privilege, or immunity. There is nothing provided to the court to support a finding here. And accordingly, I find that the plaintiff has failed to meet his burden in establishing that there is applicability of the Civil Rights Act in this instance. One of the, in each instance, so I'm particularly, specifically, I should say, looking at counts three and four, for which relief has been granted. In both of those counts, in addition to the declaratory relief, the voiding of actions taken, I'm asked to award what's generally referred to as injunctive relief, thereby compelling, or therefore compelling the defendants to change their agenda and public notice practices to provide adequate notice to the public. I think based upon a review of the facts and circumstances in their totality, including the instances or the date, meeting dates referenced in Count One, although they did not, they're not cognizable before this court because they violate the statute of limitations, I do not think they can be ignored, that this has been an ongoing pattern, and it carries through to the counts three and four, where relief was granted, that there has been a pattern here. Accordingly, I do think it is appropriate for the court to enjoin the defendants and inform them that they are required, as is everybody that legislates or passes any sort of administrative policies, personnel decisions on behalf of the public, are required to comply with strict adherence, according to the Supreme Court of the State of New Jersey, with the mandates of the Open Public Records Act. So I do think injunctive relief is granted, and this is appropriate in this interest, and therefore it is granted. Now, one of the things Mr. Kaplan has asked for also in Counts Three and Four are costs. Mr. Kaplan, I will hear you regarding your costs, sir. Mr. Kaplan, you're muted.
My apologies, Your Honor. Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Thank you very much.
I have a non-attorney my own way of calling the cost due to the current act and the cost of filing the complaint and the order to show cause, as well as copy costs, which are fairly minimal, but those are the only costs I'd be seeking at this time.
Tell me, do you know what your copying costs were?
I don't have exact figures. I mean, they were over $100, but I'd be happy to cap it at $100 for the court if defendants will, or the court will acknowledge that. Otherwise, I can maybe away itemization, but it was not very significant. I don't want to make this no difference.
I understand. There were, the filing costs of the complaint and the order to show cause, I am told, is $300. Does that sound accurate to you?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Edelstein, do you want to be heard regarding costs?
Well, I would simply note that the Open Public Meetings Act is not a fee-force shifting statute.
All right. Thank you very much. I agree with you, it's not a cost or fee-shifting statute. However, I do think it's appropriate in this instance to award costs to Mr. Kaplan, in the amount of $400, $300 for the filings, and $100 for his copying costs. And I think it's appropriate because when we talk about the purpose of the Open Public Meetings Act and similar statutes, they are meant to provide relief to the public when the statutes are not being followed and the rules are not being followed by the public entities. And in this instance, Mr. Kaplan has come forward and shown a light on this, what particular issue at the TNEC School Board, which I, I hear Mr. Edelstein say, and it appears that they are trying to comply, but they have not yet done so. So I do not think that the private citizen who brings the act under to enforce the Open Public Meetings Act against the public body should have to bear the costs. Accordingly, I'm awarding costs in a total amount of $400. You will receive an order outlining my decision today. Gentlemen, I thank you both for...
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
If I could just be heard for a brief moment regarding the injunctive relief moving forward, only because that was the only part that deals with something yet to happen. At the meeting last night, the group, the executive session happened again without a resolution indicating what the topics are, and the three resolutions were walked into the meeting after public comment, with the requirement moving forward that they have a resolution in the agenda to advise the public as further requirements under Palillo and his request.
I am not going to address and outline instance by instance, Mr. Kaplan. That is not my job. I cannot give advice as to how to proceed. I am confident that Mr. Edelstein will counsel the Board of Education that they are to comply with every aspect of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you both for your time and attention to this matter. As I indicated, you'll receive an order summarizing my findings today. Thank you all very much. Stay well.